And, you know, not that Ken didn't do everything he could, but I'm just saying that, and that's further away from the intersection. Closer to that intersection, it just doesn't make any sense to me to say, you know, go ahead and turn left. I don't care what MDOT says, it's still, it's still perilous. And why, why put ourselves into that situation? I mean, I think we just would be asking for accidents frankly, and we'd get away with it right now. That's my take on it anyway.
Any other discussion? Yes?
I would just like to add that in my brief discussions with Mr. Kern, he had, he thought that it would possibly be a right in, right out, left in, so a three-quarter access, if you will, restricting the left out.
Yes, that's, that's where we're at.
Yeah, I, so we would approve of that, or agree with it, we're actually gonna, you know, whatever MDOT and the traffic impact, you know, we want safe, safe situations, safe access out there. Valley Vista carries much less traffic, so that wouldn't be a full access.
And that's another exit anyway, I mean, from a restaurant, so that's another reason to...
You go in and out through Valley Vista.
Exactly, exactly. So it does give you another alternative, and same with Curtis Cleaners.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend anybody coming out in that area trying to make a left-hand turn, I mean, it's just senseless.
We gave McDonald's a back exit that way, Burger King.
So making that a condition of the third review standard, that it would be a right turn only on exiting Burger King onto Main Street.
I think he called it a three-quarter turn, right?
I'm saying a left turn into it would be fine, and I'm not saying that, I'm saying a right turn only on the exit of Burger King. Anything else? And, and also a full MDOT study. Make it a condition that there be an MDOT study, period.
That's, they said that is going, that's going to happen, yeah, so I think we have a standard here already for a condition, talks about MDOT approval.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so, the only condition then that I'm adding to the third site plan review standard would be a right turn only on exiting Burger King.
To Main Street.
On to Main Street, that is correct. Other than that, all in favor of the review standard number three, please say aye.
Aye.
And both, same sign. And number four.
So we're picking up here, I just saw more left on the bottom of page six of my report. Removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with the requirements of this ordinance. Housing Commission requires that approved landscaping buffers and or green belts be continuously maintained to ensure that the proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public and private property. If you guys have been to the site, you know that there are really no natural features on the site presently, other than the two trees that are located in the Main Street by the way, which so far as I know are going to stay there. We talked about landscaping already, so that's in section 4.26E, talks about the one tree and the three shrubs, three sturdy field out with Long Main Street, they satisfy that standard, so I'll review if that standard has been met.
Commissioners, any questions at all? All in favor of the site plan review standard number four, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number five.
Satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements of the city of Lowell will be met. Again, this is a condition of approval, and we put that on everything that comes across our desk.
Again, any questions, commissioners? All in favor then of the site plan, review standard number five, I'm sorry, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And number six.
The general purposes and the spirit of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan of the city of Lowell shall be maintained. We talked about the master plan a little bit earlier tonight, we do feel that it's consistent with the master plan and it fits in with what else is in that particular location, so we can have that standard developed.
And again, number six, the site plan review standard number six, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And again, any public comments at this point on the general process or the site plan review standards? Hearing done, I would like to close the public portion of this hearing, and then I would entertain a motion to accept the site plan special land use for Burger King with the following conditions that are here and any that we add in the orders besides the one that was...
Well, you just added the one about the...
Right turn.
Yeah, right turn only out onto Main Street, so that's not specifically addressed, so just to run through the conditions really quick, the first four conditions are the conditions that we put on everything. First one says that no activity on the site shall be undertaken until a building permit has been issued. Two, and prior to any permitting issued, applicants shall pay their allocation permit fees. Three, maintain all required federal, state, local permits and approvals. Four, comply with any requirements of the fire department and other applicable emergency personnel. Five, comply with the requirements of the city of DPW requiring water and sewer service connections. Approval, obtain city approval for both water and wastewater connections and, and those locations, that's in here because there was, there was an issue with the way that they have the, I believe it was the sewer factions showed on the site plan, so we separated those items out. Number seven, which we've talked about a little bit already, applicants shall revise the existing easement or create a new one between the subject property and property of the south, which is Curtis Cleaners, to the satisfaction of the city attorney to risk parking circulation. Number eight, applicants shall obtain MDOT approval of the access drive onto Main Street, and then number nine...
Right turn exit onto Main Street.
Yes.
Right turn exit.
Onto Main Street. That is all that I have.
Commissioners, any questions at this point? I would entertain a motion then to okay the Burger King special land use.
In-site plan.
In-site plan with the following nine conditions.
I make the motion that we approve Burger King's site plan and special land use with the nine conditions.
In support?
Support.
And any discussion? Amy, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Breymeyer, Allison, Marty Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cadwalader?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
Thank you. So the special land use and site plan review has been okay for the Burger King product. Thank you, thank you for your...
Thank you very much. Commissioner, moving on to special.
Yes. Next, I'd like to open up a public hearing for the Michael and Lindsey Bryant special land use and site plan review 216 East Main Street. And do we have a representative for Michael and Lindsey Bryant here? And at this point, I'd like to open this up as the public hearing.
I'm Michael Bryant, this is my wife Lindsey.
Hi.
And again, just a brief detail, what would you like to do?
We bought the building, just got it cornered from here, a year ago, September, and with that, we did some renovations to the apartments that were in there, and instead of putting them on for monthly rental, we put them listed on Airbnb for short-term rentals. Couple of reasons, one, we're out business owners, two, have another income in there other than people paying rent, whether it be commercial or residential, so we felt that that was a better way to go for us, and it's also just less wear and tear, everyday people in there, living in pets or anything else, so that was the reasoning for that, and it's just, it's been going great, everybody loves the town, everybody loves the apartments. I believe we submitted a lot of reviews along with, with that, and we've had multiple more since, since we submitted that.
And how many apartments are up there?
Two currently.
And you are asking us for the special land use permit, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. You want to have a seat, and we'll, we'll go through the process here. Andy, you want to lead us through it?
Yes, so this is your second application now for short-term rentals, if you recall, we processed this application for a different location on G Drive, thank you, a little while ago, so this one, it's a little bit of a, quite a bit different environment, so when we drafted the short-term rental standards, we permitted them, I think, in the, in the suburban residential, I think in R1, then we also included them in C2 also as a special land use for exactly a situation kind of like this, where there's property downtown, we know there's only one hotel in town that usually doesn't have much room available, as I understand it, so it made some sense to allow for this kind of use downtown where you can walk to everything for short-term rental purposes. And so this one is going to be a little bit simpler than the previous application because they're not constructing a new building, it's a building that's already there, obviously. So there, there is no site plan, we don't, they're not going to mess with the outside of the building, so we don't really need to steal that, however, the ordinance does require a site plan, and because some of the zoning ordinance standards kind of deal with the building, the layout itself, like we have a maximum number of people per bedroom and things like that, we do think that a site plan would be helpful so you can really get a feel for what, what the inside layout of, of the building is, and to make sure that your standards are going to be effective, so we'll come back to the site plan in a second. For the special land use review standards, I'm assuming, do you want to get public comments now, or walk through these standards first?
Is, is there any specific comments at this point in time? Okay, let's, let's go ahead then.
Okay. So the first standard says that the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to have to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of a general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. Obviously, you know, the building, we wrote achieves the desired aesthetic for downtown Lowell and is consistent with other structures in the vicinity, it's built up the street, it's a cool building, historic building, we don't find that the use would change the essential character of downtown Lowell, so in our opinion, that standard would be satisfied.
Commissioners, any questions? Again, we'll follow the same format, we just, all in favor then of approving the special land use review standard number one, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Standard number two, the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the city of Lowell master plan. As one can imagine, this property is within the downtown future land use designation, and its existing land use is also downtown, so the downtown designation in the master plan desires and encourages mixed-use, walkable, historic main street type development for obvious reasons. Typically, downtown is not like in, in many cities across the United States, it's characterized by retail on the first floor, offices and residences above, and, you know, two, two to three story buildings. This would be on the second floor of the building, the first and third floors, as I understand, are currently vacant, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, again, the use itself, I think, we're not talking about a physical sign of a building, it's just the use that's going on inside the building, because they're not building anything new. So we feel that because the, the billing and by extension then the use fits into what downtown Lowell desires, walkability, pedestrian scale, being able to walk to stores and shops and restaurants and services and parks and the Riverwalk and all that stuff, we think that is consistent with the nature of that.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Andy, when the third floor gets renovated, they have to come back, but they're going to Airbnb those.
Yes. So if, if they were to be approved, they only basically get approved for whatever they're asking for, so if they're doing the second floor right now, that's what they would be permitted to do, if they renovated the third floor, which let's say it had two more apartments in it, so they're basically doubling the number of short-term rentals on the, on the property, they would have to come back for that.
In addition, there is a question mark there, I guess, that's why I asked the question, how many apartments are we looking at here, one or two? So we're approving two apartments.
That is my understanding.
That's why we do that site, site plan.
Yes.
For the interior. So...
I do have a question on that, though. If we decide to extend one of the apartments into the third floor, so we're not adding an apartment, all we're doing is actually just basically, we would like to put a stairway in and build out maybe two more bedrooms in, so it's still one unit, but just adding more bedrooms on the third floor, would that still need to come back for another use permit because it's still going to be falling under the one apartment?
Um, I would say yes, yeah, just from the standpoint that...
He's going up.
Yeah, it would materially change it.
The reason why we asked that is because in the one back apartment, when you go up on the third floor, all of the original from who knows when, it looks as if there was an access to a double, where that was all one in the back, so it would literally be, they pretty much plywooded over that access, and then the second back apartment has a drop ceiling, to where it had covered that, so that's kind of why we asked, because it'd almost be like, you know, undoing what they kind of...
It already existed.
Right, exactly, so that was where we kind of questioned it, which either way, we don't care, you know, what we have to do, we just want to make sure we would do it the right way, if it came to that.
Yeah, I guess, we would process that as it came in, I don't, I don't want to get too much into hypotheticals about that, but with special uses, there is a way for staff to administratively approve an amendment like that if you feel it's sufficiently minor. So if we were increasing the capacity of the building and the short-term rental from, you know, five people to six people, maybe we just say, okay, that's fine, but if you're doubling it or something like that, then we might send it back to you, so it, it depends on the specific nature of what, what the change would be at that future time that would dictate what we would do, and I don't, I just don't know.
And that would take up more parking spaces too, right?
Right, yeah.
Potentially. Do you got a copy of all the references that we put out?
Hmm?
Do you have like copies of the ordinances that we made?
Uh, well, for Airbnb, I don't know if they were given a copy of the ordinance, our staff report walks...
Just what we have to do.
Yeah, I mean, so our, our ordinance walks through all of the, all the Airbnb specific, or not Airbnb, but the short-term rental standards, and most of them are included as, as conditions, so we will get into parking and all that stuff in a minute when we kind of go through everything else.
My take on the, it's an additional floor, you're doubling the number of beds, I, I just think that you come back. I, that's, that's why, to be honest with you, I...
We were just thinking, instead of it being like a couple, it would be like a family coming.
Yeah, I understand.
So it wouldn't necessarily need more parking, but...
Well, that's where the ordinance put the bedroom.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I have so many.
Where did the two people per bedroom come from, because that's kind of where we're running the problem, they're just one-bedroom apartments, so if we have a family of four, you know, we provide air mattresses or old away.
Porter crib.
Right, porter crib, stuff like that, so when we're, if we're limited, there are only two people per stay, I feel that's kind of narrowing our...
That came from people trying to stack eight people in one room.
Sure.
Absolutely, and I can, I can definitely understand that, and Lindsey and I both said that we're open to work with you guys to help kind of modify ordinances if there's a hope out there, you know, an option for that, something maybe we can provide you more information on what we're seeing on our end.
Mainly because we have couples that will come with an infant, so they want to get away, they love being here, and again, we've had the reviews and we have their statements, but they have an infant that they don't want to leave, or, you know, want to bring along, so they're not necessarily taking up a space, and we provide a porter crib where they bring their own. It's kind of like that, where they're not like adult bodies, but we didn't know where that stood there, because that's kind of a touchy question, you know?
Oh yeah, that got thrown in there from people trying to put too many...
Oh, I completely agree. We've tried, we've had people try to add more, and we're like, no.
We've had people wanting six people, it's still a one-bedroom, you know, and we're not trying to push any rules or anything, we just want to make sure that we're following what's in place, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we've renovated them and made them look nice, and we don't want our money to get thrown away by people trashing them either, so...
Well, and I think at this point, we, we are looking at this specific piece.
Great.
So we, we have to address this.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, Andy, you can get with Andy on specifics of some of those other things, and if he has questions, he can, he can bring it back to us if necessary.
Awesome, okay, great.
I think that's the better way of going.
Sure.
Similar to the apartment of the pockets, it's a totally different piece and type of thing, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so we've gone through the proposed special land use, which is the number two special land use review standard, and it's, remember, this is for two apartments there, so any questions, and if not, all in favor of the second special land use review standard, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. Number three.
The proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway, streets, police, fire protection, drainage containers, refuse disposal of water and sewage facilities. Again, it's an old building in downtown Lowell, it's been there for a really long time, we don't have any concerns about highway, streets, police, fire, et cetera.
Andy, it's, the fire department should review it, isn't that part of the Airbnb ordinance that we passed?
Yes, and as we had our process, this stuff all gets circulated around to all the departments and everything, but yeah, we do have a specific requirement and condition in here that mentions the fire department, yes.
So having said that, all in, are there any questions, commissioners? All in favor of the proposed special land use review standard number three, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number four.
The proposed special land use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Similar to the previous application, if, if conducted in accordance with the standards of the zoning ordinance, we do not feel like that would be the case. This is a fairly small-scale Airbnb, I mean, this isn't a, you know, twenty-bedroom house or something, we're going to have a whole bunch of people here, so we feel like this standard is satisfying.
Any questions, commissioners? Obviously, there is the cleaning and maintenance and designating the local agent, again, that's part of the Airbnb standard, correct?
Yes, that is the Airbnb, that's in the, in the zoning ordinance, so what, basically, we require is a reasonable maintenance of the property, and I think we require that they have like a professional cleaning service, but if they don't do it by themselves, that's fine. And then the part about the local agent is, some Airbnb owners don't live here, or they don't live close, they own the property from some distance, and so we would want them to designate somebody who can be here in like twenty minutes if there's a, if there's a significant problem that needs to be taken care of immediately, or in California or something.
That's addressed in our other standards for short-term, yes. Okay. Commissioners, any, any comments on the standard number four? All in favor then of the special land use review standard number four, please say aye.
Aye.
Number five.
The proposed special land use shall not involve uses of activity on materials and equipment or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general, or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, human scare or orders. This is, this is one especially with regard to short-term rentals, that we solicit public comment about this one, and we've not heard from anybody so far, so I think there's not a huge crowd here, so I'm not anticipating that, but if you want to reach out again, I don't see anything...
I would ask, I'll ask for public comment, and, and the other point is, is that this is a self-contained unit.
Right, um, yeah, I mean, sometimes the concerns, yeah, I mean, sometimes the concerns, you know, come from neighbors, and the one potential issue with this is that it could be very close, you know, on the other side of the wall, somebody who's living there that might have a different experience.
Commissioners, any questions? All in favor then of the special land use review standard number five, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number six.
The proposed special land use shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, and property with all applicable rent shall be submitted to the city, and that standard is addressed as a condition of approval, and it always is.
And commissioners, all in favor of the special land use review standard number six, please say aye.
Aye.
Site design standards for short-term rentals.
So this is a fairly new section of the zoning ordinance, I think we approved this back in like March or 2018 or so, and so, I didn't put all, all of those standards in this section here, this is just a few of them, just kind of highlights, so one of them, the, the unit's got to be located on a parcel that meets all the minimum standards, because this is in the downtown district, there is no minimum lot with, there is no minimum lot area standard, so it does satisfy that. Seventeen oh four, this is subsection E, which is right at number five, it does restrict occupancy to two persons per bedroom, so if there's, if there's, if there are each one-bedroom units, it would be two people per unit, I guess.
Correct, there's...
So four desks would be the limit between the two units.
Yes. I, I think we need to delineate that here, that there's two units with one-bedroom age, is that correct, two bedrooms?
Correct.
And I'm not sure that we've ever, that we ever addressed the baby issue and things of that nature here, but the intent was now they have twenty people in a four-bedroom house, so that was the intent of the...
We do have a max on Airbnb, four each unit as four, like, you know, if you were able to put in there how many people can stay, we've just, we just put it at four, to also kind of cut that off on our end, where we're not trying to cram a bunch of people.
Mostly it's because it includes children, so if we put two, anyone with kids, it would automatically, in their certain Airbnb search, it would automatically deny them.
Right.
So it's like, we don't want to deny kids from coming, only because this is such a family-oriented town, that there's no reason why, you know what I mean, we want to cut them off instantly, and that's what we, what would happen with Airbnb if we only put two.
Can we put on there as a condition that can be two adults per bedroom?
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not that concerned about the infant, obviously, or something like that, but if there is, and I'm not saying everyone do it, so don't take that way, but if you have, you know, I don't know, two adults and a bunch of seventeen-year-olds, and the adults aren't really paying attention, and you know what I mean, like, because that's way different from a six-month-old infant, as we know, so...
Well, that also is restricted on Airbnb too.
Yeah.
We have it on our no part, like, that's absolutely, it cannot be rented for parties, they, I mean, that's also part of, they see that instantly when they're with a book.
Kids, like, two kids?
I don't know that we can do that in a relationship, well, let's think about that for a second, but...
How familiar you guys, familiar you guys are with Airbnb, it, there's so much information in there, so like, there's so many layers that they can have on there, whoever set that up really, really did a great job and did all of the forethought for that, and a lot of that can be handled on our end just by the servants, so we can...
Want to keep going?
Yeah, so, we did recommend approval of the, of the special land use, like I said, most of the rest of the standards for short-term rentals are actually included in the recommendation conditions, you'll see those still on at the fourth page of the report, thirteen conditions. Conditions six or so, six through thirteen are right out of the ordinance, but I, I feel like it's important, especially for these first few, and seeing as how they've been, if they have any hot topic lately, in various places, that it's important to kind of list them out here, so we'll walk through the recommendations. So we'll walk through the recommendations and the conditions, and then if you want to modify those, we can. So again, the first three are the same standards we put on everything, pay their application fees. I did not include the one about demolition and all that stuff, because, you know, demolition. Second one requires they maintain all required state, federal, and local permits. The third one pertains to fire department, complying with fire department conditions. The fourth one says that the applicant shall submit a basic floor plan or site plan to ensure compliance with all applicable zoning ordinance standard for review by the zoning ordinance enforcement officer. Number five, which we'll come back to, so we have a limit right now of four guests at a time. So this is, you know, again, two per bedroom, and there is, if you want to specify that and kind of narrow that down more.
No, I think if we say four guests, we're saying four guests. How they invite them off is their problem.
Okay.
Good way of working through it, yeah.
Number six, applicant shall notify in writing to the local area fire department and police department the dates and number of guests for each unique stay. So a unique stay is whenever someone new comes over, you know, just an email can be sufficient, just to notify the fire department about who's going to be there, how many, and for how long. Number seven, applicant shall provide the city with a twenty-four-hour telephone number with which the host or host's agent can be reached in case of emergency and enforcement matters. So if that's not the applicant, it's somebody else who is close, who they have designated as their local agent, that's what we were talking about earlier. Number eight, applicant shall provide an in-unit notice in a conspicuous place that includes the property address, twenty-four-hour telephone number with which the host or host's agent can be reached. All applicable rules and ordinance is related to the short-term rental and the maximum occupancy of the dwelling unit as permitted by the subsection. Nine, the short-term rental shall be conducted in a manner consistent with the customary use of a dwelling. It shall provide reasonable, safe, reasonable and adequate sleeping arrangements in traditional bedrooms with proper ingress or as consistent with law. Use of any other arrangement to provide additional occupancy on the premises is prohibited. Ten, objects without approach on neighboring properties. Eleven, the applicant shall provide sufficient waste receptacles substantially screened from view. The premises must be kept, maintained free of debris and unwholesome substances. Garbage must be kept in a closed container and disposed of on a regular weekly schedule. So basically, that's just like a typical residential, you know, kind of facility there. Number twelve, the appearance of the short-term rental shall not conflict with the residential character of the neighborhood. Dwellings shall be properly maintained per all applicable local and state codes, kept in good repair, so that the use and no way detracts from the general appearance of downtown Louisville. And thirteen, last one, the applicant or his agent shall be available to accept telephone calls at all times. At the short-term rental is rented, the host or host's agent must have a key to the unit and be capable of being physically present at the unit within sixty minutes to address issues unless arrangements are made for a substitute person to address issues within the same timeframe. The one thing that I will mention, I know, I think Dave, you asked about parking earlier. In the downtown, same thing as in the mixed-use area for any other sort of land use. We do count public parking within four hundred feet of the property as meeting that required parking standard. So given its location, obviously, it's, there are many parking spaces within four hundred feet. So I know that's often an issue with short-term rentals, and usually that's when it's a more, when it's just a same-family home. And so this is a little bit different arrangement, and there's obviously a lot of public parking, either on the street or off the street, but they could talk those toward the zoning ordinance. So that is my recommendation on the matter with conditions, and so back to you.
Thank you. Any public comment at this point? Otherwise, I'm going to close the public portion of it. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes. You're very fortunate to be our second Airbnb, congratulations. And the first one, and I like that we did, we acquired them to come back here for review. I would like to continue doing that. It's, I think it's just good practice, if there's issues or whatever.
Absolutely, it's a new venture, so I mean, it totally makes sense.
And then the other thing, like, behind my building, we've got overnight parking. I know they didn't put any here, so that might be something you may want to approach the city about, seeing if under designated parking spots for, for all that.
You mean specifically dedicated?
Yeah, we have overnight in the back, and we have two-and-a-half-hour parking there, so.
That's something they can do though, straight with Andy or Andy or the city.
Yeah. I think that's what you'd be correct.
Yeah, you know, if they probably spotted Mike, I would get, I would get involved, but, yeah. I'd like to make a motion, any other comments, I'm sorry? I'd like to make the motion then that the Michael and Lindsay Brian special land use at two sixteen East Main Street, along with the fourteen conditions, which is the fourteenth one being that we revisit here in one year, be okay. And is there support?
Us supported.
And discussion? All in favor? Can we have a roll call, please, Amy?
No. Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Bremeyer?
Thank you. And having said that, then, the site plan is okay. And special land use and rentals, thank you. You're going to want to get with Andy and go through some of the Airbnb rules and ordinances, I would think, and all of those kinds of things, and make sure you're totally comfortable with that.
Oh, that's great, thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming. Next, I'd like to invite the representative from the Snyder Manor. And thank you for being patient with us.
Oh, no problem.
Full agenda tonight.
I'm Pauler, I reside at eleven hundred North Washington up the street. And I represent the lower area housing, AKA Snyder Manor. I serve as Vice President of the Board. The reason we're before you is after this body approved our site plan, we became aware of and engaged with capital for compassion out of Hallowan, Michigan. And they crossed us and submit grants on behalf of organizations like ours to the Federal Home Loan Bank. They have an affordable housing program. And that grant will cover approximately a third of our cost. So we put the brakes on construction, because if you're under construction, they say, well, you don't need the money, we've already gone forward with the project. They are fairly confident that we will be awarded the grant. We applied for it August eleventh, and everything has been dark since then, which is pretty typical of this program. And the grant should be awarded December eleventh, is the latest date that we've heard. That's when we'll find out if we're awarded. And when we receive that grant, we'll be charging, you know, full steam ahead with the construction of the building. We just have to wait until we know if we have the grant.
So you're looking for an extension from your existing one?
Yeah, I believe we would be required to begin construction either December or January, I think.
Yeah.
Obviously, we will, you know, once we receive approval, then going out for bid and proceeding forward.
So the zoning ordinance states that each development shall be under construction within one year after the date of approval of the fighter's final site plan. So we're coming up on that, I think it would be either a year now or next month. So it says the planning commission may grant one six-month extension of such time period, provided the applicant requests in writing an extension prior to the date of expiration, which they have done. And it goes on to say that the extension shall be approved if the applicant presents reasonable evidence to the fact that said development has encountered unforeseen difficulties beyond control. The applicant, a project will proceed within the extension period. Either the above provisions are fulfilled or the six-month extension period expires, then site plan approval essentially sunsets. And so if they, if they're not starting within six months from now, they would essentially have to come back for another site plan review, similar to what was done in twenty seventeen.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner? I will propose that we extend a six-month extension for the site plan for Snyder Manor.
Us support.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Amy, can we have the voice, please?
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bremeyer's yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I.
Thank you.
Your six-month extension is there, wish you best luck on the grant.
Thank you.
It would be nice, too, if you'll just call and let Andy or City Hall know that you got your grant and that you'll be going forward. So I think it would be nice.
The application for building permit, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been communicating pretty rarely with them on this, and so.
Good, okay, well, thank you. Merry Christmas, hopefully. All right, that makes care of the new business. We are now on to the old business, and the first old business is a public hearing for planned unit development. And Andy has, or City Hall, so somebody, Andy, somebody put together a whole bunch of pages here on our planned unit development. The latest rendition is the first one you see. So there have been a few additions to what we had talked about, and the first one I see is on page six. So unless anybody has any questions, I'm opening a public hearing, by the way. So, public hearing is underway, I mean, PUD.
So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'll just give kind of a brief review of kind of where we're at with this thing and summarize last month and the previous month, just so you're all up to speed and refreshed. So when we, last month, I provided you with basically a virtually a complete rewrite of the PUD district chapter. And we did that primarily because we felt that it tried, it was trying to, you know, regulate kind of a typical single-family suburban PUD that you'd probably more likely deal with in, like, Virginia's township, Louisville Township, and probably not so much in the city. It worked just fine for the PUD over on East Side Town here, I'm blanking on the name of it, off the top of my head.
Hawthorne?
Uh, no, not Hawthorne.
Highland?
That's a PUD. But there aren't many other places in the city where you could have a multi, you know, residential, single-family PUD, just because there's not physically room for it in most places. And there are other places in the city where it would make sense to offer kind of a redevelopment type of a PUD. Instead of a new, just single-family project that might have some small and lost, there's a lot of other things that we can do with PUDs that might make some sense, some with all that in mind. We proposed last month basically a comprehensive review that would allow for the single-family kind of suburban style PUDs that we've been doing. But also allows for redevelopment and for different land uses for, you know, the planning commission and council to be able to waive a bunch of different requirements of the zoning ordinance. And there were a few public comments we had at the last meeting, just kind of offering some suggestions, primarily related to simply trying to not drag on the process too terribly long. We want this to be like an eight-one process, if we can possibly help it, might turn out badly in some instances. But, so what I did is I went through and kind of made some changes to address some of the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting, and I will kind of review those with you now. So I'm not going to go through the whole thing again, because we've been through it a multiple times already. Thank you for sharing this. We can't talk about the changes. So I think the first, the first significant change is on page, like, eight. And it's just, I always had it highlighted, so we had just a couple little things, like on page seven, we included the word streets under things they had to show us, like proposed streets. On page eight, we added items seven, eight, nine, and ten. A conceptual plan for provision of public water and sewer, conceptual grading plan, conceptual stormwater plan, conceptual building types, including elevations. So these are the things that they have to give us on the front end when they come in for an occasion, if they give us quite a bit of information, so we can adequately determine if this satisfies the standards of the zoning ordinance. One thing that we had before was a mandatory planning commission public hearing. I changed that to optional, and I know there was some discussion on whether or not the planning commission should have one. You, based, you know, based on our discussion last month, for most new PUDs, I think you probably will opt to have that public hearing.
Will we have that option?
Yes, the planning commission, you can decide on your own if you want to do it. The reason why I made it optional is that there are some instances where if there, so for example, sometimes there is an approved PUD, you want to make some minor change. But it's, it's, it's not quite minor enough that, so it still has to come back to you. But there has to be a city council public hearing, that's a requirement of, it's a case law.
When you completely pass it, it still has.
Yes, yes. So it's up, it's going to be up to you at all times, if you want to hold one, the planning commission can just hold one whenever it wants. So we felt like making it optional doesn't really hurt anything, it doesn't take the planning commission out of the process and allows the commission to use its discretion in doing so. We added the word on the bottom of page eight, city council review and required public hearing, to very clearly state that a public hearing in front of the city council is required. I don't really like the fact that we have.
Andy, that's actually on page nine in her stuff.
Okay, yeah, I have a split.
Good page, yeah, that's okay.
Some section C. Everything else there is, the language is the same. So city council has to hold, 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 hold the hearing. That's because there's a Michigan Supreme Court decision a while back that said that with a PUD, that whatever entity has the final approving authority on the PUD must hold the hearing. So that would be city council, because it's a rezoning area, so city council must hold the hearing. We have standards of approval which are unchanged. We do have some significantly changes under the PUD final site plan, I have this new administrator review part. So before, if you recall, I had a whole section in here on, we had a section on concurrent review. And then previously, what we suggested to have happen is that following the city council public hearing, the PUD, the PUD plan, and then the PUD, so the property would be rezoned to PUD once the city council approved it. And then, once that was done, the applicant would come back to the planning commission for like a final site plan and make sure that, so that's when they spend all the money and do the heavy-duty grading and utility and layout and all that kind of stuff. So we did that intentionally, so that it allows for a little bit less risk on the part of the developers. They don't have to do all that work early on, they can make sure that it's rezoned to PUD, and then they can kind of do that, do that later. So there was, it was suggested that we modify the section to, again, accelerate the process, not require yet another planning commission meeting. And so what we did here is we deleted the concurrent review section, and what we're going to suggest instead is allowing for just an administrator review by staff of the approved site plan. So once it's approved by the planning commission and city council, then the.